All right, everybody, we are going to call the meeting of the October 26, 2020 Board of Supervisors of North Coventry Township Meeting to order. Zoom call tonight, we have myself, Jim Marks, the Chairman of the Board, Spencer Claypool as Vice Chairman, Harvey Greenwald, Rebecca Elliott and Rick Sheeler are joining us along with Township Manager Erica Badorf and our Solicitor Dan Sager. And at this time, Board members, you have the minutes of the October 13, 2020 meeting in your packet. Do I have any comments or corrections on those minutes? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of October 13, 2020?
So moved.
Spencer made the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Rick seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the minutes are approved. Bills, we have unpaid bills totaling $237,649 since our last meeting and have list paid bills and payroll totaling $104,039. Do I have any comments or questions on the bills? Hearing none, do I have any comments or from the public? These, the bills were posted to the township website over the weekend, available for download. If anybody has any questions regarding the bills, please unmute yourself, identify yourself and ask your question. Hearing none, do I have a motion to pay the $237,649 and acknowledge $104,039 of payroll and paid items since the last meeting?
So moved.
Rebecca made the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Spencer made the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the bills are paid. Developers bills, anybody have any questions on the developers bill? Hearing none, we have nothing under subdivision and land development, so we're going to go right into new business. In your packet was a resolution of approval to authorize the PMRS pension contribution rate of non-uniform employees for the 2020 plan year. The township approved the reduction in contribution to the defined contribution plan through PMRS for non-uniform staff for the past few years due to stable actuarial valuation of the plan at its current time. We should have had this resolution a while back, but Erica's brought it forward for us to sign. Do I have any comments on this?
I think that sums it up very well. This, this resolution is typically done in December of the preceding year in which the contributions are defined. So we'll be doing this again in December, moving forward for the next plan year.
Okay. Very good, thank you. So at this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the amendment and reduction of the non-uniform pension plan contribution from 4.5% to 3.75% for the 2020 plan year. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Harvey made the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I think Spencer got in there first, so Spencer makes the second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed and the motion passes. Okay. Last week at the EAC meeting, one of our original members of the EAC, Bill Cannon submitted his resignation as a member. Bill was an original founding member along with myself, Adam Sager, Jake Klein and Helen Savage, with Pat Washburn being the liaison from the Planet Commission. It was way back in 2003, is when the EAC was founded. And Bill has been a member ever since. And at this time, he has decided to step aside, given the opportunity to some new residents in our township to participate on the EAC. So at this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to accept the resignation of Bill Cannon. And also, I would like Erica, if you could send Bill a letter of appreciation on behalf of the board for all his years of service. That would be appreciated. So do I have a motion to that effect?
So moved with many thanks.
Second.
Rebecca's made the motion, Harvey seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the motion passes, so Bill, we thank you. If you're watching this at some point in the future, we traded emails last week, I expressed certainly my appreciation for all his years of service to the township and to our EAC. Next on the agenda is the appointment of a new member to the EAC. And at the meeting last week, the EAC unanimously recommended that Corey Trigo, resident of the township, be appointed to the vacant, unexpired term of Bill through December 31, 2020. Corey, the information was in your packet, his application, his resume. Some of you may remember that back in June, Corey gave the EAC presentation on water in Chester County and water preservation and quality. It was a really well-done webinar, still up on the YouTube channel, so certainly encourage everybody to see it. But Corey is just a great asset, is going to be a great member of the EAC. So at this time, I'm looking for a motion to appoint Corey to the EAC for the unexpired term.
So moved.
Harvey made the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And Rick seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Member application was very well done, thank you.
He's got, he's got a very impressive resume. So we look forward to working with him and what he has to bring, which he's already done. He's been a non-member EAC participant for quite a while now. So this really just gives him some voting privilege, but his participation is going to continue and we look forward to that.
We're happy to hear that.
Yeah, me too. So it's good to get new volunteers in the township.
Absolutely.
Moving on to the next, we're going to move on to old business at this time. Fernbrook Lodge, and there's been some stuff going on since the agenda was created on Friday. Erica, I'm going to turn it over to you to kind of bring us up to date where, where we are with this and how we're going forward.
Sure, thank you. There's a lot of progress taking place on, I think essentially at this point, the demolition is complete. Some of the siding has gone up today in terms of the project. We are working with the contractor to ensure that the payment application documentation is sufficient. So this evening, although they have submitted the information, we're looking to update it and give us a little bit more time and we'll have it for the next meeting. But so far, they're really, they're getting a lot accomplished.
Moving on to Administration Supervisors Report, Rebecca, we'll start with you. Do you have anything to bring up to the board and the public?
I do not, not today.
Okay, very good, thank you. Rick, do you have anything?
There's an open space meeting tomorrow night, seven o'clock, it's a Zoom meeting. I believe it's posted, Jim, if I'm correct?
It's on the township calendar, yes.
That's all I have.
Okay. Harvey, anything from you?
No.
Spencer, anything from you?
Yes, I have one thing. Richard France Architect is doing a proposal for the interior design of the lodge. So I just want to let you know that'll be coming out soon.
Okay, thank you. The only thing I have is Pottstown Metropolitan Regional Planning Commission meets on Wednesday night via Zoom. So I'll be, I'll report back. Managers' report, Erica.
Thank you. Just to kind of get us started here, we did have township offices are closed at the moment. We did have a confirmed COVID exposure. And to just kind of go into that a little bit, we had in the office, you know, we're all dealing with so many different issues and, you know, organizations are grappling with this. But in light of that, we had approximate contact. Now, what that means is we have an employee who has a, you know, personal member that they're in close contact with COVID positive. So in response to that, last week, the township building was sanitized by BioOne. We did shut down the administrative operation and the office is closed to the public at this time. Good news is that right now, we have confirmed that, you know, the staff person is doing fine. Everybody's handling things okay and is negative for COVID. Given that information, we're going to continue through an abundance of caution to keep the administrative operation at a staggered staff, bring staggered staff into the actual office and do self-monitoring at this time of everyone's condition. We're going to keep the township building closed through the end of this week and reassess. Right now, we're handling the operations with the public using all of our, you know, remote operation we had done in the past. And we certainly appreciate everybody's patience to that end. And, you know, keeping the thoughts of keeping our staff and our employees, the residents, safe during this time. With that said too, it's starting to gear up, it's very busy in terms of election season. Chester County Voter Services does have plentiful information. I know everybody's getting tons of information about registering to vote and mail-in ballots. Just a note of precinct 156 West and North Coventry Township where Schenkel Road, or the Schenkel Church rather, was a voting precinct location, that has been moved to North Coventry Elementary School at 475 Kemp Road. That had occurred during the primary earlier this year. And then mail-in and absentee ballot applications must be received by the county by October 27. There are mail-in ballot drop-off locations through the county and the closest one is the Henrietta Hankin Library in Westminster Township. But of course, if you need any information, please contact voter services. As far as a financial update for the township, for looking at our general fund budget performance, January 1st through September 30th, 2020, total revenue collected is $4,550,736. That's 95% of our budgeted revenue for the year. And we have our total expenses at this point at $3,708,475. That's 72% of the budget for this eight-month period, so it's proportionate to where we need to be today. As far as the 2021 budget, we did have our budget workshop number one on October 15th. We had preliminary budget figures, we're looking at conservative estimates on income, certainly with the economic climate as it is and monitoring things very closely, but with no reduction in services at this point. We do have many items to consider, department requests for, you know, keeping the fleet status of the various departments at a healthy level and also looking at the assessed valuation of the township. So that comes in towards the end of this month and we'll be looking at the budget with better information with October's numbers. And we're looking at holding our next budget workshop November 12th on Zoom. I do want to mention, you know, we are right now projecting a $37,000 deficit. But as we refine the budget figures moving forward, we're really going to try and, you know, analyze things so we can put, you know, a stable 2021 budget out moving forward. Something I also wanted to mention, I want to thank everyone involved for the virtual goat race event. On a, you know, light note, we really were able to come together and execute something fun with safe precautions in place. And I know, you know, Jay Herb for the Parks and Rec Commission, all the various volunteers and for Chairman Marks in order to, you know, put that video out to the public is one way to connect, given everything we have going on and certainly appreciate that. And that's my report.
Very good, thank you, Erica. Dan, Solicitors' Report.
Yes, we finally got from PennDOT a proposed agreement for a mutual cooperative agreement with respect to the closed-circuit TV cameras on the various intersections. I'm circulating a memo, we got it towards the last week and I'm circulating a memo that you should probably see some point today, this week, if you haven't already. I think it's ready for discussion at the next meeting. Tripodi, the Commonwealth Court has denied argument on it today, we got the order. So they are not, the, the order in place with Judge Mann has not been stayed. I am following up with Mr. Corey as to where we are with him in terms of bids. I'm aware of a couple bids at least for the, for the property. So hopefully I'll have an update for you on that at the next meeting as well. That's it.
Public comment, supporters of the meeting, the public has to make a comment. To do so, I asked that you unmute yourself, identify your, your name and your address in the township and make your comment. I do. I see one thing here, I got a hand up from Diana McKee, I'm assuming that's Dan. I'm calling you first since you had your hand up here.
Thank you, Jim, this is Dan Doyle from 39. I just had a general question for the pension contribution memo that you voted on this evening. What is the reason behind that? Is it just to allow employees, non-uniform employees, to put less into their pension plan? Is that what the reason of the dropping of the rate from four and a half to 3.75?
I'll let Erica explain how that works.
Sure. Thank you for the question, good question. Yes, in essence, the lower contribution is less out of pocket towards the plan. There is a report done annually, it's called the F205 Report, which looks at the actuarial health and value of the township's assets in that pension plan. And then it also balances that out with the actuarial liability for that time. And so that's the analysis that's done and it, and it has been done, my understanding, for the police department in the class and negotiating through those rates. And for the non-uniform plan, it's the same thing. So it's something that you, we certainly have to analyze and look at on an annual basis. And as long as that, you know, that measurement stays stable at that point, the township is solvent in terms of its, its pension plan. But that is, that is really the main purpose.
So just to follow up on that, does, if I was an employee, could I continue to do the 4.5%?
You could not elect to do the 4.5 in the pension plan. What you can do is have a separate, separate plan altogether apart from the public pension plan, which we do have, which is like a 457, which in the municipal world is called a 401A. So then it's more an elective basis of contributing more to a retirement fund outside of the pension plan.
Okay, thank you very much for your, your explanation of that, Erica, thank you, thanks, Jim.
Yep, thanks, Dan.
Okay, somebody else? It's John Worth, just a comment from an EAC perspective. I want to echo your thanks to Bill Cannon. I mean, Bill has served on the EAC since before I joined and I've always appreciated his input. I'm very happy to say that he has said that he will continue to be involved as a, as a non-member volunteer. So I'm certainly looking forward to continuing to work with, with Bill. And, you know, obviously Corey is a very energetic, he's a great choice, you know, to, to step in and work with the EAC as an official member, we're looking forward to it very much.
Yes, very good, thanks, Jim, appreciate that. Anyone else?
Good evening, this is Charlie Walker, can you hear me?
Yeah. How are you?
Good, good, it's been a while. So I think you have some information that Eric might have sent you.
Yes.
Jim?
Yeah. So, yeah, so let me bring you sort of up to date on this. So after the last meeting, I went out there a day or two after to see, you know, to take a look for myself. There was, there was nothing there at the, at that time, last Thursday or Friday. I drove back out again and sure enough, there was, sitting smack dab in the middle of the street.
Right.
So.
Tomorrow, it'll be a week that it's been there.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I, I called Erica, I sent a text to Erica, these couple of photos and I called her from, from right there and I said, you know, you guys have a, you guys have a beef here, right? I would be upset, certainly I would be upset if, if this was in front of my house or on my street.
Right, thank you.
So I asked, I asked Erica to, to get with Matt Diker, our officer in charge, to see what options that we have to combat this. Because, because honestly, you guys are asking for an ordinance, but I'm not sure that's the best route to go. One, it's, it's time-consuming, takes a long time to implement, it's, it can be costly. And, and if you're trying to put a blanket rule over the whole township, there may be some opposition to this. I knew, I forget the township, but there's a township here locally that went through this and there was opposition to it. And, you know, last thing I'm sure you guys want to see is, is a debate that goes on for three years. So I asked Erica to get Matt to see what our options are as far as there's no parking or what, what kind of options we have. I said, Eric, and the argument here, I think you and your neighbor should be making is if, if a fire truck needs to get down that street, it could be an issue. Any of those houses are on fire back there and you're trying to get an emergency response down that street. It's, it's pretty narrow for, for some of our trucks. So let me, let me bring Erica in here, maybe Matt can, can chime in here and see what, if any options, what, what, what's the path forward?
I'll start out, thank you. And, you know, this is to bring these things to our attention so we can, you know, investigate it and throw a look through it. I am looking at a few examples of, you know, perhaps there's a way we can look at this from a staff discussion and come up with, you know, options, of course, research this issue with other municipalities that are dealing with the same thing. You know, in talking with Officer in Charge Diker, the safe passage of traffic is, you know, a primary concern. And, you know, that is something to be brought to their attention as, as the police department. But as far as parking of recreational vehicles, that's something that I think we need to take a look at the zoning side of things. Look at, you know, ordinances out there and, you know, do a little bit of research. But, you know, especially from, if there's an apparent issue, contacting, contacting the police department. Matt, I don't know if you want to weigh in at all.
Yeah, no, just like I said to you earlier, you know, I did go out there and looked at it, you know, there, there certainly is a, I'd say a visibility issue, a slight issue as you come around the corner there, around the circle and coming out. I don't know if it's necessarily a traffic issue just because of the number of traffic or cars that go back and forth that way. But I, I did speak to the owner of that camper and, you know, I did, I did hear his side and, and understand, you know, that he brings it and leaves it to, for the weekends that he goes camping. So it's there for a day or two and then it gets removed and then, you know, at the end of the season, it's, it's no longer in the, in the area.
Charlie, Eric, has that been in your experience, does it disappear for the winter or?
No, well, it comes sometimes on a Wednesday, but mostly Thursdays. They leave Friday evening, then it comes back early Sunday afternoon and leaves on a Monday. And that happens maybe from April to November. This week, it's been there since last Tuesday afternoon and, like I said, tomorrow it'll be a whole week, it hasn't budged. And it's not hitched up. We feel that it's a real safety hazard and I think you'll agree that it's, number one, it's a safety hazard. It's not neighborly and it's not good for the township. Because apparently in North Coventry, somebody could park a registered RV trailer on any one of the township-deeded streets. I mean, somebody from Pottstown, Birdsboro, anybody could just park on one of our streets. And I did some research and there are some municipalities that do have a time limit per week regulation. And if Erica, if you want to research that, but there are ordinances to that effect. I don't know if you have a current ordinance that you could put an addendum to it, might make it simple and faster, I don't know. But I think for the good of the township, because it could happen anywhere, not just our street. And I'm sure it's happening to other streets. Maybe it's just not brought to anyone's attention, but it's a 30-foot trailer sitting in the front of everyone's home, so.
Hey, Jim and Erica, can you hear me?
Just from, just from speaking with the, the camper, when he said I was here for this past week, I, from, from what I understand from talking with him was that there was a, a vehicle parked in front of it for a couple of days, which didn't allow him to get hooked up to the hitch to, to remove it. So that's why it was there for the past week from, from my understanding. And I don't know when this picture that we're seeing up on the screen was taken, if that's the vehicle that it was, he was making reference to or if it was something else, I, that one, I don't know.
This was, this was taken on the 23rd, so that was Friday, I guess.
Hey, Jim, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. That's actually my vehicle, I was having delivery that day at my home, I'm having a little bit of work done. I had sent Erica some additional pictures also with the trash truck and now they kind of squeak by there. Also, I did look up, you know, currently there's no ordinances other than the fact that trailers cannot be on the front half of the, of a property in front of the property. But that's actually on the lot, there's no ordinances appears that are of anything to do with being in the street. And that's actually, I think, the angle that we're coming at here is just to put a time limit.
And it's not moving.
The homeowner association angle also, and of course, they don't have any jurisdiction on a public street.
And Eric's car was only there for not even a whole day or maybe a little more. But like I said, tomorrow will be a whole week and that hasn't moved.
I was advised that it was going to be moved out here this evening, so, or, so I don't know if it has been or not. He was, the owner was getting his tow vehicle repaired to come down to fix it and move it.
Oh, repaired, well, that's now, it's been there a whole week, officer, yeah, okay.
No, no, the vehicle, not the, not the camper.
No, that vehicle, no, it was there for not even a day. Right, Eric, I mean?
Yeah, no, I think, I think the officer's speaking of the, of Dane's vehicle.
The tow, yeah.
His, his truck actually wasn't broken for a week. And I think that just is something that recent happened, but nonetheless, you know, I don't want to get into nitpicking here or there. But we, we present, we wanted to present the situation to you guys. We believe that it is an issue and I guess you can give us some guidance on what to do. I, I do think an ordinance is appropriate, but Jim, you had mentioned it is not, I haven't heard an alternative.
I'd like to also mention that we have been very patient as homeowners and residents. This has been, this is the two years in a row that he's been doing this. It's not, this is not a recent issue. We've been very patient and it's just getting progressively worse, the timeframe of him leaving it there, which is presenting the issue that we're at right now.
I also believe that there's other people that are interested because I was getting personal chats on the meeting last week on this.
Yeah, the only reason I bring up the ordinance is, it's a, I mean, this is an isolated problem as far as I know. I'm sure it probably happens elsewhere, but we've not heard of, heard of it here.
It's probably not an extreme, this is an extreme issue we have.
Yeah, well, yeah, and an ordinance is going to require, you know, Yeah, well, yeah, and, and ordinance is going to require, you know, advertisement and hearing and public participation, and sometimes when you ask, you know, you ask those kind of questions, the opposition is, you know.
Well, is there any way to put a timeframe on it being there maybe 24 hours?
Well, that's where, that's.
With it being there 24 hours, but this whole day-long week periods that this is going on for is
Yeah, it's here three to four to seven.
It's ridiculous.
Days out of seven.
I mean, we're okay with it 24 hours.
Yeah, we want it definitely be neighborly also.
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate that, I, I, I understand, I, I, I get where you're coming from.
But, you know, God forbid, if we had an issue in here, we have a fire hydrant that's in front of this house next to us. I mean, this is a huge issue.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe, maybe if I could, I'll, maybe I'll put it, I, I don't know if you want it, the problem with the ordinance is exactly what Jim was saying. We have, it's a vast township with different kinds of components in this, if it were an urban township, or if it was a true suburban township, that's where you see these things a lot of times, frankly. Maybe there's a, and, and I don't know, frankly, I would have to look at the, the code. But Officer in Charge Diker may be able to give us something that if it's, it looks like if it's blocking a causeway or hindering, or if it's, that it probably would be within the, at least the summary, that I, I can't imagine that you can block a, a road for fire or for just generally right away, if somebody were to park on the other side of that, that would be blocking the road.
Exactly.
So there are updated pictures that we just recently sent Erica of that happening, and then that happens on a weekly basis here.
And that is a public road, so I would think that if, because he parks there, and obviously it's not there temporarily, he's that maybe there is something that could be cited for that if he doesn't move within X amount of time period. I don't, I don't know for a fact, I mean, it would be something I would have to research, but that may be something. That way you would have, the, the police would also have a little bit more discretion, too. You don't, you don't necessarily want to enforce something because it's two hours after the timeframe set forth in the ordinance, or because they may be on a, on a road that probably isn't used that often, and, and there hasn't been issues like we're talking about.
Yeah, it, there's so many incidences that we've had this year that have been very unsafe, and basically when you come into the street, you have one way in, one way out. So when that's parked there, if there's another car coming in, somebody has to, that's trying to get out, we have to wait for another car to come in. Right now, we have a lot of construction vehicles, because there's a home next to us getting stuck to work done. You know, we have also the township trucks that come in. We have also a common area where the homeowners association has a company, landscape company that comes in with a trailer and truck with mowers on it, too. And they do the common area in the middle of the cul-de-sac there. They have trouble coming in and park, deciding where to park when this thing is here. So, so many things that go on weekly, you know.
Yeah, and, and certainly, you know, certainly I recognize the issue here, and I want to see that we, we can find a path to success and, and, and accommodate.
Yeah, if he wants to have it here for 24 hours to do what he needs to do, he needs to load up, and then he goes off, you know, him and his family, but we're okay with that, and when he comes back, if it's here for 24 hours, we're okay with that, too.
Well, let's, let's see what Erica can find out, she'll work with Matt, and we can get Dan to weigh in as they work together and see what kind of solution that we can accomplish here.
Yeah, we appreciate you. With the actually, we tried to hit away and tried the, obviously with you guys, so.
The police, and we called the police and found out what our options are here, you know, and that's here we are with you guys now, so we're trying to do it the right way.
No, we appreciate that.
But thank you for your time.
All right, we appreciate it, thank you, everybody.
Yeah, thanks, Charlie. Any other public comment? 25 people on our meeting tonight, it's great to see everybody coming out to join us. One of the upsides of all this has been more public participation and having the opportunity for, for people to dial in and, and see how local government works, so we appreciate you all joining us this evening. The board does have a, an executive session scheduled, this is a personnel matter. So at this time, I'm going to ask that everybody log off, and we'll see you back here November 9th, 7 o'clock. Thank you, everyone. Board has come out of the executive session, it was held for personnel, no motions were made or actions taken during that meeting, and at this time, we are going to adjourn the meeting. Good night, everybody.
Good night, thank you.